And I'll vote, I'll vote yes as well. So that's enough.
Yeah. Probably more than enough.
All right.
Are we expecting any of the board members?
Pardon?
Are we having, are we expecting anybody else to join us for the board members? ZBA?
I don't know.
Is our other member joining us?
Anthony sends his regrets. He's, he hadn't got, he didn't catch the early train. So I'm sorry, he won't be coming.
Okay.
We have enough to conduct business today?
Yeah.
Yep.
We need four votes, so four people will do it. Let me see here. I wanted to. So we don't have Mr. Shepherd on, on board yet. Is he coming or is he sending an emissary?
I'm, I didn't get a definite, but I think you'll see Stan Ellis or someone from Dallas and Roy.
They're at 6:40 anyways.
Yeah.
Oh, that's true. All right. Has anybody read, there's some minutes to be approved. Has anybody read them? They looked okay to me.
I, I read them. They looked all right.
Yep.
I read them and they looked fine.
So why don't we go ahead and get a motion to approve them?
Still moved.
Second.
Anybody?
Second.
So that was two sets of minutes, correct?
Just one.
This one.
Just January 30th.
Sorry, I read so many documents today.
And the seconded, sorry, the seconded.
Yeah, so polling the members, John?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
And Bill Cattigan votes yes as well. So the minutes are approved. And what are we getting? We're 6:34, so we got another six minutes. Anybody have any burning issues?
No, although Darlene and I had talked about something, not having to do with the ZBA directly, but in doing a little bit of homework, we do variances, we do special permits, easements. But unless it's something that directly impacts the land parcel, recording at the Registry of Deeds should not be necessary. It's only the things that, that, you know, again, a variance or a special permit. But I think we've been having people record stuff that they don't need to record.
Yeah, I, I actually never, I never, never dawned on me before, after all the years I've served on the zoning board, we tell people, you'll, you know, we have two weeks to write the decision, you're going to get it. Good. And Bill always instructs them how they have to record it at the Registry of Deeds and blah, blah, blah. Never realized that a special permit for an accessory apartment does not have to be recorded to be valid. So.
Only things like, like a variance or, or an easement.
Because the special permit for an accessory apartment doesn't run with the land, it runs with the person.
Right.
So that was an attorney, you know, we, we did a little digging on that because I don't think any of us realized it, including the building inspector and, and the land use department.
Yeah.
And I ran into that recently where there were previous decisions granted and they weren't recorded.
Yeah.
So they were trying to tell me that they weren't valid when the opinion is that they, they certainly are valid.
They're valid, it doesn't need to be recorded.
Right.
Well, but I mean, the, the whole point of recording is, I, I, I have to disagree with you because it's a special permit and it needs to be recorded. I mean, that, that only protects the applicant as much as anybody else because, you know, if.
Well, there's nothing that's.
We lose all our records. What?
There's nothing that would preclude them from, from recording it if they wanted, if they felt that that was going to provide them some additional. But as far as statutorily, for whatever my humble opinion is worth, and I spoke with a couple of other people about this who do land stuff, and they say unless it's something that goes directly to the property, but not just to the, because the special permit is, is for people. It's not.
The other part of that is, is the permit expires upon transfer of a property. It expires anyways. So I mean, hey, if it was me, I would record it.
Actually, Darlene, it only expires if we say it does on the transfer of the property. If we don't. If, if we don't explicitly say that it expires on the transfer of the property, that there's nothing intrinsically there that says that it expires.
I agree.
Because we used to have it, they used to expire, what did we, they were good for what, three, was it three or five years?
We had five years on the, on the accessory apartments.
And I just thought we changed it so it ran with the property to the point of transfer. So what causes that? We just arbitrarily decided to do that or is that in our rules or? I guess now I'm curious to understand that.
Dave Chanel recommended it.
That makes sense.
Yeah, the sunset clause, yeah.
Because, you know, these accessory apartments are in single family homes. And if they choose not to continue the use, they don't have to. It would just be a single family home. So the special permit is for the use, not the actual property. So that's where that opinion, that legal opinion came in.
Well, I'd like to see that opinion and confirm it with town council, that's all. But I, I think it's much smarter for the applicants to record these decisions because then there's no argument about it, you know?
I agree with that.
I mean, that's, that's the whole purpose of the Registry of Dees is to record all these things. So that, you know, they're not hanging out in the breeze somewhere in somebody's strongbox or safe deposit box or, you know, heaven forbid, Town Hall.
Right.
So the, the recommend, it's recommended but not required to register.
Well, can we, can we send, is there any reason why we can't send a memo to our town council to ask that question and get their opinion?
I actually have to talk to Adam tomorrow about something else anyways. I could just throw that into the conversation.
Okay.
If that's meet with the board.
The host just, TKM just let in somebody with the label anonymous.
Anonymous, wow.
Yeah. So.
There was a, there was a new presidential candidate with that, some, some name similar to that.
I guess they, now they're gone.
Anonymous left, but.
Thank you.
We, no, we can't prevent somebody from attending a virtual meeting and force them to identify themselves. I've already checked with the state on that. All we can do is monitor their activity. And if they do something that is objectionable, we can boot them out of the meeting. But we can't prevent them from coming into the meeting to begin with.
Yep. And that's why I just noted it so we would be, you know, aware.
I saw it. I'm sitting here watching.
Thank you.
At least it wasn't unanimous.
Anonymous.
What was the name of that presidential candidate? I can't remember, but it was pretty good. It was like the last.
Joe Biden?
No, no, no.
Herman Supreme.
The, the least, least something candidate, I, I don't know, least objectionable candidate. I think they, he changed his name officially to, to something like that. It was pretty funny.
No, he was up in New Hampshire, wasn't he, or Vermont?
I don't know.
Well, we're at 6:41. If we want to open the hearing for the special.
It's usually, it's usually more useful to have the applicant around, but I mean, I mean, I can go through the, I can go through the mandatory referrals, but you know, it's one of those, if the tree falls in the forest, did it make any noise? There's no one.
We could have the clerk read it, open it up and see what happens.
And I move, we open the 6:45 public hearing for the application for renewal of an accessory apartment special permit located at 355 Main Street, Assessors Map, 18-8-0.
No.
No, that's not tonight.
You're on the wrong planet, John.
That's, no, 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 that's what I have.
This is a Gary Shepherd.
This is, this is earth removal tonight. You're reading the minutes.
My printer's not working right.
That was in the minutes from the, the three accessories that we did.
All right, fine. We want the legal notice sent for Mr. Shepherd?
Sounds good.
In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48 and the Townsend Zoning Bylaw, the Townsend Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a remote access only public hearing on March 27th, 2024 at 6:40 PM on the application of Gary Shepherd for a special permit under the zoning bylaws, Sections 145 to 46, 145 to 65, and 145-40. The applicant is requesting a special permit to continue existing operations and remove 109,000 cubic yards of gravel from the property at Three Wheeler Road, Assessors Map Block, Assessors Map 4, Block 9, Lot 0. The public may attend, attend a remote access only public hearing on TKM hosted Zoom meeting at, and so on. Do we need all of that stuff?
No, you don't have to read it all. No, I think that covers it. So is there a motion then to open the hearing?
I move that we open the hearing.
Second.
Okay, polling the members, John?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
And Bill Cattigan votes yes as well. So the hearing's open. Moving right along to the referrals. The, let's see. How does this work? I've got one from the land use coordinator who happens to be on the horn tonight. Application, application complete list comments provided to staff previously. I recommend ZBA requesting a construction activity schedule phasing plan. Be submitted annually to help monitor activities under this permit. Sounds good to me. Then we have the, who is this? Oh, the select board thinks that we're competent to, to handle this and thanks us for our, our hard work. Let's see. I'm having a hard time telling who this is from. Oh, okay. Planning Board says that they support issuing a permit for this project, and that's signed by Laura Schiffer, and the chairman. Conscom says, no comment. And that's signed by, I don't know who that is. Can't read it. The clerk of the Conscom. The building commissioner says no comment. And the, what is this one? Oh, Board of Health. Board of Health says, removal of gravel may not create a nuisance condition. And dust control must be used so as not to create a violation to 310 CMR 7 dot double zero.
Did you mention the police chief? He was no comment as well.
Yeah, that's why I see that down. The last one is the police chief saying, see, no, it, no issues, says Mr. Sartan. All right. Anything else? We're still. I think, I don't know that it's worth having any discussion without the applicant present.
Right. Did they like forget the date or something?
I think what we should do is continue, continue the hearing to the next meeting or whatever. Let's figure out what the date is and, and we also need, I think, to do a site visit. I'm particularly concerned about what's going on with the old Craven property, which abuts this and also belongs to Gary Shepherd now, so.
Wow. Okay.
I don't, I don't know what that's going to do to this project or whether he's trying to keep them totally separate or with the dealer.
There was a comment in the application about that, but I'm sure when they present, they'll, would, would assume they'd give some clarification and some more information. But yeah, I would, I think, what did we give? A special permit in 2016 and again in 2020? That was a really long time ago. I think that 2016, we did a site visit for that, but like, I mean, that's, that's a long time ago. So I, I would love to, I'm a visual person. I, I would love to see what it is and I'm talking about. And if, if they could have, do you guys want to do? I'm thinking we should do a site visit that's planned, not everybody go on their own because you've got to, got to get into the property. It's not just from the curb aspect. And the one thing I would ask is if someone could have an actual copy of the plan there so that someone can say, we're standing here or we're standing here, because it's, it's big. Does that make sense?
I've done an e-size version, but there's probably bigger ones around.
I'm sure there's one in our file, you know, the, the thing that you fold and.
Both sides, yeah.
All right, so what?
So what's good to set a time for?
A site visit, I mean, would Saturday morning work or is that bad for?
Uh, this Saturday?
I haven't, yeah, I haven't.
I'm, I'm available.
I'm available. I don't have anything on Saturday morning.
Okay. Oh, should we?
I probably do, but I'll work around it.
10 o'clock maybe? So Beth, can you call them and, and set that up?
Yep.
Great.
10 o'clock Sunday. Yep.
All right.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to continue. Do we, do we say like a motion to continue till next time?
Yeah, you'll need a date and time.
Oh, what would work?
So why don't we pick a date to continue the hearing to? That wouldn't be the, um, the site visit.
Right.
So, yeah. Site visits just for looking around, not, not talking about the application.
No talking.
Yep.
So if we go, so do we have to go two weeks? Does it have to be posted again?
No, no, it can be continued and you don't have any minimum time.
Well, I, I'd like it to be before the, the 15th.
Right. So I'm, I'm away next week, so I can't join. So the week of the first is out, so I could, you know, look at, at something. Second, I could do the 10th, the ninth or the 10th.
Sure.
Okay.
Can we do it at 7 o'clock instead of 6:30?
Yep.
Absolutely, yeah.
Is that right with you guys?
That's okay.
Okay.
April 10th, we're saying?
Yeah. So I make a motion to continue the Wheeler Road Special Permit Hearing to April 10th at 7:00 PM.
And site visit Saturday, which is the 30th at 10:00 AM?
Do we want to make this a, a hybrid meeting instead of just a Zoom only or, or what?
That's fine. Yeah, I can arrange that. I, I try to find good conservation this meeting on that night. I think.
They are, but it's okay.
They are.
You'll see who's my favorite if I show up here to Concom, you'll never know.
Jill, to your point about hybrid, I, I caution on that. Having some people in the, in the meeting room and some people online, it's a nightmare. I, I would go for either one or the other. That's my opinion.
Yeah, especially since you started with a virtual in terms of opening the public hearing. You should probably continue in the same way.
Okay, all right.
I know.
I don't want to make a fuss, that's for sure.
There's so many issues when you have some people in the room and the restaurant virtual. It's like a different setup.
So did you guys, you want to second that motion to continue and vote on it?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, polling the members, John?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
And Bill Cattigan votes yes as well. So the, the motion carries. We're going to continue the hearing till Wednesday, April 10th at 7 o'clock.
I have a question about the site visit. What if it doesn't work for the applicant or somebody to show us around?
Well, I'm not sure. I would imagine, I've actually requested a number of times for the board to come out, but no offer was ever made, no time was ever scheduled by the applicant. So at this point, I can't say whether they're going to respond or not because they've been non-responsive to multiple.
I'm talking about a time that's good for them to be around, not whether they're interested or not.
I can ask the engineer again. I did reach out to the representative engineer via email and heard no response. I called and emailed. So I would do that again, you know, primarily.
I would suggest doing it this way. Send them an email and say the board would like to do an inspection on Saturday at 10:00 AM. Please let us know if that's going to be a problem for you. And that, that way, if they don't get back to them, we can have our inspection. We'll just show up. At least we gave them notice.
I would, I would also let them know that we met on this date, we opened the public hearing and we continued it because I have a funny feeling it's really unlike people to show up for something this important. I have a feeling somebody messed up.
Yeah, I did send.
Their calendar.
Yeah, I did send this out on Thursday to both the applicant and his representative engineer, and the engineer did respond. So the applicant did not, but the engineer, his representative engineer did. I assumed he was all set. It's unlike him to not attend a public hearing. Want to ask the.
He's probably down at Hutton Hall looking for the meeting.
Oh, no, I told them it was remote. They're well aware. I said, you cannot come in person. Do you want to ask the individual who's in the meeting if they want to speak, a member of the public? Perhaps they have some information. Kristy? I don't know.
Oh, hi. I moved to Townsend over the winter. I live up West Meadow Road. And so the scope of the project has been notable and I am intending to learn more.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Also, nice to meet you.
You too. Thanks for coming. Right. So then we'll again, um, well, the board will resume on, again, April 8th at 7:00. So log into the town calendar with a Zoom link. Okay.
April 10th, to clarify, not the 8th.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought that you said.
April 10th.
Yeah. Yeah, April 8th is the eclipse and that's all anybody's going to do that day.
Yeah, I was going to go up to Vermont for that, but I'll end up sleeping in my truck.
And then it may end up cloudy.
Do we have anything else to do?
Well, I, oh, I just wanted to note a couple of correspondence items that there is a planning board public hearing, April 1st at 6:30. It's also hybrid. Proposing amendments to bylaws and proposing changes to planning board regulations. The amendments to the zoning bylaws are in preparation for a 2024 annual town meeting. So that's on Monday and, I'm sorry, yeah, Monday, the first. And it's going to be a joint meeting with the Bylaw Review Committee and the Planning Board. The Bylaw Review Committee is bringing forward a number of, um, amend, proposed zoning amendments and a number of bylaws to, to spring town meeting. So we're taking care of just the zoning amendments at this planning board hearing because that's a statutory requirement. I would ask you guys, if you haven't already, to take the survey for MBTA 3A compliance. I don't know if you've seen that. It's under my email signatures. I just wanted to ask again.
It was hard to miss, Beth.
Yeah, so I'm trying to think. We had a couple of things. Oh, and the bylaw, I'm sorry, the master plan is going to be rolling around for implementation. And if Jessica has a minute to chime in, I would love to let her introduce our role and our, our goal.
Hello. Sorry, I'm not prepared for this, but I do, under pressure, no worries. Yes, so we, the master plan was issued or approved, I think about three years ago at this point. And to my knowledge, it's pretty much just that, collecting a little bit of dust. So, and whatever else is in the land use office. So what I've done with, with best help is just unearth all sorts of different town reports and plans. And we started making sort of a master list of goals free to the boards and committees and departments in town. And lucky ZBA made the cut in the master plan for some implementation. So I'll just real quick read through what y'all's responsibilities are. Hold on one second. All right, so under, so, so all different recommendations in town that the town should, you know, consider adopting or moving toward based on the different goals of residents, mainly and, and town representatives to move the town forward. So one of the ZBA implementation goals is working in collaboration with the planning board and the water department for a water recommendation to ensure potential developments impacting water capacity are reviewed by the town slash Conservation Commission by the planning board and the Board of Appeals during projects review that might have an impact on the groundwater resources. That's one. We have three total. Under the Recreation and Open Space Chapter, the ZBA would work in collaboration with Planning Board and Montechusset Regional Planning Commission to encourage balanced land use consistent with New England character through. to encourage balanced land use consistent with New England character through zoning and development review that is sensitive to wildlife corridors, cyclical review of zoning districts to ensure land use suitability and preservation of agricultural agricultural resources. There was one more, hang on. And then last but not least, in collaboration with the Planning Board and the apparently elusive Towns and Business Association under economic development, that the town needs to develop bylaws that support businesses while at the same time support the rural nature of the community and protecting the environment. So just over the next few years, few months, we have sort of a working table that we'd like each board, committee, department, you know, whichever responsible entity it is, to just start filling in the table. So maybe some things that you've been working on the past few years that we don't really know about or that you never even knew were were in collaboration with some of your goals. To start filling in that table and then see how we might be able to continue to to move forward to meet our goals. So.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Hi, John Page.
Hey, John.
I'm on the zoning board and also am slash was the chairman of the Charter Review Committee. That process is, excuse me, hung up in the Senate. And I'm just concerned that there are things that may get implemented or proposed that are gonna be contrary to what the town voted for to move forth with the new town charter.
What's the process?
Let's see, I I am almost living in the homes of Senator Cronin and Representative Scarsdale trying to get this thing pushed through before the end of session. Because if it doesn't, then we have to start all over again. And then the question from a legal standpoint is are we existing without a charter? So, like I said, I I make daily phone calls. I was charged with seeing this thing through and I am bound and determined to make it happen, but it's looking increasingly scary.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah, because because we had, we had a committee of nine people and we worked for several years to make some changes to the charter. And now it's been almost several more years that we're still waiting for all of our folks down on Beacon Hill to get off their back ends, and this is not a big deal. Doesn't cost anybody any money. It just brings Townsend up to, up to speed in terms of requirements for charters.
Yeah, I I that's interesting to hear Jessica's three three points there and and, you know, the the issues always, I've always had with the master plan is that it has no legal force, you know, and it's it's like an advisory thing. It's what the town wants based on the survey and input from the various people that create the master plan update. But you know, as a regulatory board, you know, we're not specifically responsible for creating zoning bylaws. That's more the purview of the Planning Board. And right now we have the Bylaw Review Committee, which is kind of, you know, sticking our nose into the Planning Board's business. So it's gonna be interesting to see how that works out at town meeting. But anyway, we'll, we'll do our best, but it's hard to get everybody singing off the same sheet.
Now, in in those three goals, does the Z B A have to create any bylaws? Or not necessarily?
Well, see, I mean, well, the, Jessica, what was the first one? Because that that one that rang some bells with me.
The water.
Yeah, I mean, our, our, you know, our water protection is is, you know, it's difficult. I mean, we've, the problem is the town has all these shallow wells. So protection of our water is wicked important. And regulations to protect it are not very good. I mean, we have limitations in the, in the zone one of contribution to the wells. And you're, you know, you're not supposed to be able to build in there. And but, you know, we had, for instance, Copper Smith Way was built. We we had them use these, I forget the name of it. It's a special type of septic system that reduces the nitrogen loading by fifty percent. And and we, we also had this awesome map that showed the water flow from that piece of property into the cross street well. And you know, we we lost that map and I know who who's who has it, but you know, I haven't been able to get it out of them. They won't, they said they would only give it to the guy who went belly up there and that on Copper Smith Way. I forget his name, but but I would think the town should try to get that map because that would be really useful information for us to have to be able to estimate potential nitrogen loading from other projects on different resource areas. Because, you know, it's not, it's not a trivial exercise to get all these field observations in in place to create a map like that. And but the problem is, you know, we'd have to pass a bylaw that said, hey, you know, if your nitrogen loading is over a certain amount in this particular area, we're not giving you a building permit. Because, you know, it's it's just like these people that wanna build on the beach. And, you know, the beach is being eroded by climate change and big storms. And, you know, we're all footing the bill for those people's flood insurance. You you have to, the town has to learn how to say, no, we're we're not gonna let you build there because of, if there's a reason, if there's a good reason. And it's very difficult to say no to developers. They don't like that at all. But anyway, I I think it's great. I mean, we we should definitely be talking about that. And if we could figure out a framework to have that conversation, that would be good.
Yeah, I mean, just as a recommendation, if you, sort of the the spearhead of this responsibility is listed as the Water Department and then collaborating entities are Planning Board and Z B A. So I mean, I think it's fine, you know, if you guys wanted to have the the current water superintendent at least to to a meeting, maybe your next meeting or, you know, just one over the next few months, just to see, you know, what language might be helpful, what review techniques he's already using that that aren't necessarily in the bylaws or where everyone thinks it might be a good fit to do something like this.
Yeah, that's good. And, you know, we're we're gonna be doing a zoning, well, both zoning and general bylaw review over the next couple of years. So it's kind of the ideal ideal time to have these conversations.
Right. We are, we're in the process. Beth and I are meeting with the town administrator tomorrow to to see what avenues we have to get a more technical review of our bylaws. You know, there's, there's a lot of legal review options out there and editorial grammatical type of review options, but we, you know, we we think it's important, especially for Townsend where environmental resources are are so precious to to ensure that our bylaws are, you know, are written in ways so that development is done sustainably with with a lot of consideration toward natural resources. So we'd like to get a more technical, scientific type of review and assessment of our bylaws. So I think a a lot of these points will be, hopefully will be brought up during that review.
Sounds good.
Great. All right, well, I have to hop off for another meeting. Good to see everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right.
That's it.
All right, well, I'll see you Saturday. Move to adjourn, anybody?
What time are we on Saturday again?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock. I just wanted to make sure I have in my calendar.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Polling the members, John?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
And Bill Cattigan votes yes as well. So meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much, folks.